And if you could start rolling.
Hey, we're rolling.
All right, I'm gonna call the public portion of this meeting back to order at seven oh nine P M. Looks like Trish has a flag behind her, so if people wouldn't mind, we can stand and salute the flag wherever you are. Look at Trish. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. You did that on purpose, Trish, right?
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. Okay, so as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as the result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order number twelve, pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conference call for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, which is nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Meeting ID number is eight one eight seven nine seven nine five six seven four. We're using the link that was provided. We previously previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. Excuse me, if anyone has a problem, please email B O S secretary at Newton N H dot net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled if the Board of Selectmen decides it needs to be. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Okay, so we are going to start. We have a kind of a cool presentation from Derek Fresco, who's a Boy Scout and an Eagle Scout candidate. And I myself have been fortunate enough to see this presentation already because he came to the rec meeting to give his presentation, so I broke the news to him at that meeting that he was gonna have to come back and see the Board of Selectmen in the same Zoom thing, because I think basically what we're what he's looking for is is the Board of Selectmen's okay to proceed with this this Eagle Scout project, so if it's okay.
Matt, before you do that, you have you sealed the minutes?
No, we have not. So Lisa, do you want to do that?
I think she stepped away.
Lisa's on mute. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion that the Board of Selectmen just came out of a non-public meeting under ninety one.
Matt, hold on, hold on. We went into recess. We did not end it, remember?
Yeah, that's a good that's a good point, Diane.
We need to do it after.
Okay, you need to seal your minutes, though, from January eighteenth, which you forgot to do.
Yeah, we can do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. So Derek, sorry, I'm gonna turn it over to you. And if you could give us your presentation, that'd be great.
Thank you, Matt. Will I be able to share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, so, well, like Matt already said, my name's Derek Fresco. I'm from Troop ninety one of Newton, New Hampshire, and I am doing an Eagle project at the town beach. A patio. And I'll show you everything now. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
So my patio that I want to do is gonna be in this location. Like Matt said, I've been to the rec apartment on Zoom calls and done all that and got their approval. So that's why I'm here today. My patio is gonna be right in front of the life. No, what is that? The shed?
Yeah.
Right next to the shed. Where's mine?
Disappeared.
You gotta love technology. Never works out quite the way. It's there for a second. Should mention that Derek talked to the Rec Commission. He also talked to Scott Dole, who manages the lifeguards. And he also spoke with Mike Povero, the road agent, who.
Why is it blurry?
Yeah, tell him you spoke with Mike.
Yeah, I've I don't know why my picture is blurry, but my patio is gonna be twelve by twenty. Originally, I talked to Mike Povero, the road agent. Originally, I wanted to do it at Greenie Park, but there's no room to do it at Greenie Park. So he brought up the idea to do it at the town beach. I brought up that idea to Recreation. They approved, agreed with it. And then I spoke with Scott Dole. He said that it shouldn't be in the way of the lifeguard shed, the lifeguards, anyone, and he said it was a great project. My next photo that I'm gonna show you, that's not popping up.
Sometimes if you unshare and then you reshare, I think sometimes that helps.
How's that work?
Open it with a different photo imager. Even if you just use MS Paint, you don't typically have those kinds of problems.
Yeah, can you see my?
We cannot see your picture at the moment.
There it is.
Now we can.
Oh, we got it.
It's also blurry, but the way I'm gonna do my patio is a brick patio and for fundraising, I wanna go around the town of Newton and ask people if they wanna buy a brick. And when they buy a brick, they can put their name on the brick, and when I build the patio, their name will be on my patio.
So I kinda think that's the coolest part of this idea, is somebody, some family or whatever.
Yeah, like loved ones.
Yeah.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
Would that be offered to businesses as well as individuals?
Yes, I'm gonna go around businesses around Newton. Towns. Maybe probably Kingston. I don't know about that, though. And now I'm gonna go to my high school, Samborn, ask my Mr. Stack if you know him.
We do.
Pretty much, yeah, businesses and people around Newton, if they wanna buy one.
Will you be hanging out at the transfer station?
Yes.
It's a great place to hang out. Many of us do quite a bit. So it it sounds like, I think the last time you told us the the selling of the bricks would subsidize the full project, right?
Yes.
So you're not looking for any investment from the town other than to support you in terms of the footprint?
Exactly.
And would the patio be used for the picnic table or?
Yes, I also I forgot I mentioned that, too. What also with my project, I'm gonna build two two more picnic tables for the town beach.
Wow.
Well, there's already two there, but they're rotten down, so I'm gonna build new ones.
And you're going to anchor them to the patio, so they don't walk away?
Definitely.
Six feet apart from each other?
Yes, that's that's why I made it very big, just in case.
Great. I think it's a great idea.
I think so.
And I'm ready to buy a brick.
Me, too.
I'm serious.
I am, too.
Already have customers.
They ask a question?
Yeah.
I was want this is Diane. I was just curious, how long will it take you to build this? Will it be ready for the summer, you think?
Both. So hopefully, I can, as soon as I get your approval, I'm gonna start like making like a brochure. Yeah, fundraising, like a brochure of like everything explaining, and then go around and hopefully start by spring and finish before summer.
Very good.
All right, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairperson.
Go ahead, Trish.
Um, so, hi, Derek. Great job. This is Tricia McCarthy. I am on conservation. I just maybe offline, we can share each other's phone numbers because conservation will have to help you get a wetlands permit to do this.
Yes.
Okay, so we can help you do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I also need, I also have a quite another question. I need, after this is over, I'm gonna need a contact to someone that can sign the bed and fishery paperwork for me.
Think we I think we could probably help you out with that. When this is over, the board, whoever the board may be, can help you out with that when this is over, so.
Yeah, we could all sign it.
We could, yeah.
Yep.
Trish, thank you for bringing that up. That was I didn't think of the conservation part of it, but.
Yeah.
No problem. We'll be happy to help him.
That's why we have these meetings, so.
Great.
Any other questions for Derek? So I I think I'll do this just to make it official, is I'd like to make a motion to have the Board of Selectmen support Eagle Scout candidate Derek Fresco for his project to build a patio at the town beach.
I second that.
I think Lisa won that race, so any other questions? All right, so we're gonna roll call vote. Charlie?
Let me see. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, Larry?
Hi.
And Lisa?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Matt's and I, so that's unanimous. So congratulations, Derek. We look we thank you for taking this on, and we look forward to see what you come up with.
Thank you.
Let us know through Diane if there's any other help you need from us, but you should be good to go.
Yeah, I think the only help I'll need is the signing and probably the permits.
Great.
But give us give us a contact number.
Right, and when it comes to permits, you you will want to contact our building inspector. You can get his information online.
Should need. So when when you have a moment, just email Diane your contact info, and she'll she'll share it with Trish and everybody who needs to see it. We won't make you give your phone number out on on live Zoom. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can you can stick around if you want, but you don't have to.
Okay, have a great night, everyone.
You, too. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna switch gears on the agenda, and hopefully we can do this one pretty quickly. I know we have some people on who wanna speak to this, but to pick up where we left off at the deliberative session, and to make this clear is the Candidates Night that we normally have in for the town meeting has always been hosted by the Cable Commission. The Cable Commission got together and they opted to go for a solution that was COVID nineteen socially distant. So one of the ideas that was thrown around was to do videos that were kind of submitted by the candidates, edited together, presented in some fashion. So those candidates got notified with the letter when they signed up that this was gonna happen, and some people were inquiring if it was possible to do a more of an interactive solution, whether it be like we normally do in person on cable or using the hybrid format that we typically use for Board of Selectmen meetings. But I I will say again, this is typically a Cable Commission event. We offered up tonight's meeting because it was the next meeting where people could kind of have a a voice to talk about this. So what I'm gonna do, since I'm a candidate, I'm going to kinda stop talking here and give the floor to the Vice Chair, and we can move forward with this. So Larry, do you wanna open it up for comment?
Okay. Diane, I text you. You had a chance to talk to Jamie. Are you guys gonna be able to hold it if we approve it?
All right, first, let me just say I'm recusing myself from this discussion as well.
Okay.
So I couldn't, Larry, there was an echo. Could you repeat that?
So before we did the discussion, I reached out to Diane to make sure that the Cable Committee is gonna be able to help herself with the date, and I was just wondering if she was able to talk to Jamie today.
Yes, I was. Jamie is not comfortable doing more than he has to because of the different var variants with COVID. He already had it once, so he doesn't need it again. He would recommend that you do it either be probably before your next meeting, which is February sixteenth. That would be his recommendation. Again, you're gonna need a moderator.
Trish. Oh.
So I think that.
I volunteer, Trish.
I volunteer, Trish.
All right, so Diane, so when you say before the sixteenth, we can have it hybrid. So those who wanna attend at town hall, if not, they can attend by Zoom, just like Saturday's meeting?
Yes, if you do it on February sixteenth before your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Okay, so I'll open it up to Kate and Charlie for discussion, and then we'll open it up to the public.
I am completely in favor of this. I think it's really important that people can ask questions. We have a lot of, I know there are a lot of people up. You can kind of say anything on a nice little video submit, but I'd like to have people have the opportunity to ask questions. I think it's the best way to help people know who to vote for.
I agree, especially when there's five new members of the Planning Board, and people have a lot of questions for that department.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with both ears. I think we should have it. I agree, five new members on the planning board.
There's a lot. The only question is, you know, before our regularly scheduled meeting, this, you know, how long does candidates? It takes a while. Maybe we need to come up with a format. Since everyone's getting their videos in, we can't do like the traditional format that you guys, I don't see how we could. How do we do it? That everyone gets really a short statement and that goes right to Q and A?
How about we do an early meeting, like five o'clock?
Five, was two hours enough, you guys, with all these candidates?
I think if we can if we can hold the the Selectmen's meeting, Charlie said for an hour, maybe from five to six. Hold candidates night from six to eight, eight thirty.
That's good.
Oh, hold it afterwards?
I think that would be much better. I agree, because.
Yeah, okay.
Hold on, I know I'm a member of the public. Matt Burl, Overlook Drive, Newton.
We don't know you.
So, yeah. So speaking as the chair, I'll be the chair again in a few minutes, but yeah, I like the idea of meeting before, and maybe we can try to keep that agenda light, so.
Yeah, we could even if we have any non-public, we could throw it to another day if we need to, or just.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
All right, so we can do the Selectmen's meeting from five to six, candidates night from six to eight thirty. So Diane, if Kate or Charlie have no more comments, we can open it up to the public.
Okay.
I'm good.
You want us to raise our hand?
Yeah, moderator.
Well, Mr. Chair or Vice Chair Larry, I completely agree with Kate. I think it's very important that residents have an opportunity to ask questions of candidates or email questions, as we've done in the past. Sometimes in the past, questions were emailed to some town officials, and we were able to bring them in. Crucially important that there is some kind of an interaction. I think a video is absolutely not the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So this is Diane. I just find it interesting that you got the E O C is in favor of this for the fa- simple fact that it's not a required meeting. So, you know, I'm just throwing that out to you, that it is not required. It's not like a deliberative that has to happen. You're kind of putting other people at risk, those of us that have to be there. So think of it that way, too, okay? Just another way to think of it.
Thanks, Diane, but I wasn't speaking as E O C. I was speaking as a resident and a former Selectman and somebody who back in way back when, before it was really a cable thing, it was actually the Board of Selectmen and the Town Clerk and the Moderator that kind of got together with us. And let's remember with COVID, and I do my reports, you know, COVID is as safe as everybody wants to make it be. We practice what we should. We're sanitizing. We have masks. We social distance. And as Larry said, some people can do this from home. They don't have to come in. Just like I think Mr. Donovan said it on on Saturday. If we can do deliberative this way, we certainly can do something like this in the same format that. So it wasn't E O C speaking. It was just me as, you know, Joe somebody.
Can I make a comment?
Who says who's speaking?
That's Bob.
Bob Donovan, Newton resident. Just my comment to Diane is, she's saying that we're doing an extra risk. Everybody's there for the Selectmen's meeting anyways. Where is the extra risk? Except for the people that take it upon themselves to be there or not. I think we should leave it up to the people where it's already a scheduled meeting anyways. We're not adding risk to anybody else that's working it.
If I may respond to that, this is Diane. So in the the reason I, Bob, there aren't that many people that come to the Selectmen's meeting. There were twi- probably three times as many people at the deliberative than there was at the Selectmen's meeting.
Can Kate say something? I kind of assumed when we said hybrid that we would, you know, me, I'm the one who always errs on the side of caution. I read every news article, so I totally understand Jamie's concern. I would be very happy to, you didn't notice, right, to do this Zoom. That said, I I would think it would be a much, I mean, encourage people. It's not like the deliberative where you have to be there to vote. People should first and foremost attend, to my opinion, Zooms and give, you know, I don't see any reason to put people at risk. It's a great way. Everyone can participate that way easily and safely. Just my two cents. Usually I get outvoted on my cautionary things.
Larry, I don't know if you can see, Edwin's got his hand up.
Yeah, but Diane has control of that. Diane, can you let the next public person in?
He has to just unmute yourself, Edwin.
Oh, sorry, Diane. I didn't wanna just barge in. Edwin Crall, Gold Hill Road resident, and also candidate for Selectmen. I think Selectwoman Michaels is on point. Every everything she says, what I really wanted to say. Having it hybrid allows more people to be in attendance. And I just really think the voters should have the opportunity to ask questions, and this would be the perfect opportunity. Listen, I can go out, I can make a video, I can say whatever I wanna say in my video, but how will I know the people of Newton want what I wanna say? You know, I I want the people to tell me what they wanna know about me as the candidate and what I can bring to this town. So I I really think this will benefit it, and I really hope the Selectmen consider voting yes on this.
Good job.
Guys, anybody else on the public wanna speak?
Yeah, this is Annie.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
This is Annie Collier. I'm I happen to be running, but I'm uncontested, so I I would be very interested in hearing from all the various contested cases. I wanna, you know, from every one of them, there are, I mean, Planning Board was mentioned, but certainly the Board of Selectmen is. Certainly, School Board is. There are various very important decisions to be made, and I think getting the information and having voters have a chance to get the information, and as Kate had said, you know, using Zoom works. It's not about having to be physically present to make a vote. It's about asking for information and getting information. So I I'm glad that the initial response from the Selectmen is quite positive, and I trust that you all stay safe, and I think Tricia will be a wonderful moderator.
I think it should be open for people that wanna be there. I believe Nancy said that up to thirty people are allowed to be in the building. Probably that many won't show, but some people don't have Zoom or access to it, so they will need to be in the building.
Yeah, we encourage, though, people to join by Zoom, and those who cannot wanna be there. That's the only.
Right.
Mr. Baker has his hand up.
You know him, Annie?
Mr. Baker, you're muted.
Annie, what's he saying? Translate.
Bring it up.
He's muted. Unmute, Jim.
Yes, you do.
There you go. Thank you. Yeah, I I agree with everyone who said that a video doesn't really do it. You need the the give and take of people asking questions and I mean, the the more people that participate, the the more we'll understand these candidates and in terms of why they're running and what what they bring as in terms of abilities to the positions. So to me, it seems if there's any option to have people speaking and answering questions, that's that's the way to go. And as far as risks go, I mean, the schools are open, the kids are going to school, teachers are teaching, people are working in restaurants, the postmen's delivering mail. And as Tricia said, there's if people take precautions, and we know what we have to do to stay safe, we wear masks for those who are there in person, for those that don't wanna do that, they can attend remotely. I just I can't see any possible reason not to do this. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, is that it for the public comments? Okay, so we're gonna take a roll. So the motion is to hold Candidates Night on two sixteen from six to eight thirty, hybrid, so you can do it in person at town hall or by Zoom.
Is that your motion, Larry?
That's correct. That's the motion.
Second.
operated by Trish.
Matt, question, how do we do we do we have to do the moderator at this point?
I don't think so. I think that's a question we can do, answer offline.
And I can do it if Bob just Melick doesn't wanna do it, no problem.
Okay, so Charlie, you with a second?
Yep.
A roll call, Kate?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
I'm an I, so it's a unanimous three O.
Thank you.
Matt, you're meeting.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, and and I would just go back to the the thing, you know, it's this is a Cable Commission event, so.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, apparently. So I mean, just so we're we're clear, as I said this at the Saturday meeting. You know, the Cable Commission has been doing this for a long time. We appreciate what they do. But, you know, the sort of public wants to have this take place as we've discussed, so so that's why the board is is taking this vote, just just so we're we're clear on that. All right, moving on on the agenda, as we always say, if if you were here just for the Candidates Night discussion, we won't take it personally if you drop off. So otherwise, stick around. We're not allowed to drop off, so we're gonna keep going. Item C is a presentation, well, kind of a presentation, right? On the Master Plan Steering Committee and what what that mission is all about. And I asked Annie, and I think she brought some of the subcommittee people with her. I asked Annie to come in because I think this is a very important initiative, and and what I'd kind of like to propose to the Board of Selectmen at the end of this is that we draft and sign some sort of memo to go out to the town department so they understand what this is all about, in that we think it's important that they cooperate in terms of the information flow. And other than that, Annie, do you wanna talk about this?
Sure. Um, the master plan is set up i- in the RSA.
I'm trying to mute.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Jim is going to mute, so I'm not getting an echo.
Are you guys six feet apart?
Yes, at least.
Yeah, but more like ten.
Maybe more.
Good.
Um, the RSA set up the master plan as the basis for all the zoning regulations in the town. It's a legal basis. The zoning regulations are supposed to flow from the master plan. A key part of the master plan that's been recommended, we we, at the planning board, we asked the Rockingham Planning Commission Circuit Writer, Jen Rowden, to give us kind of an overview of the most important elements of a master plan. Um, and those would be the vision statement, the land use segment, and then a new segment which hasn't been done in our master plan and it's become more and more prevalent is an implementation, which basically is saying, okay, here are the goals, here's going to do, here's who there's going to be responsible for them, and here's a by when as far as urgency. So kind of laying out a real plan for action. Our master plan in its total was written back in 1999. There was the last survey that was done in town was in 1998. So our vision statement is based off of that, according to any documentation I've been able to get from both the planning board and from Rockingham Planning. We did have an update with a vision chapter in 2006 and we had a land use update in 2008. The RSA's do not spell out a requirement, but they have a recommendation that the master plan be updated at least every five to 10 years. We're substantially over that. There are also very large segments of the master plan which deal with, for instance, a fire department and talking about what the facilities are. It's kind of obvious that if that part hasn't been updated since 1999, it's severely out of date. And that's also true of recreation. It's true of the police station. It's true of almost every department and um commission and committee in town. So the, what my request would be is that the planning board ask all department heads, commissions, committees, everything in town to involve a representative, assign a representative to be involved in the master plan. Uh, there'd be a several-fold process in that. One is that uh, that person would pull together either three or four paragraphs, two to four paragraphs about that commission and about what what is going on in that department and what the, what's happened and what the future needs are. Um, it could be in either paragraphs or in bullets. I'm happy to write up from bullets. Um, the second thing is that we need to have a survey. And next week, the planning commission's going to be looking, the planning board is going to be looking at various options for having a survey done. The master plan committee is recommending that we hire uh, Rockingham Planning for a cost of $3,500 out of the planning board's consulting budget to draw up a survey and then to tabulate results because they're professionals, they know what they're doing with it and are familiar with different issues that have gone on in our town and need to be considered. Then the goal would be that person who is designated by each one of the boards or committees or departments would make sure that they would help to get as broad as possible participation from their department, friends, relatives, neighbors and everything to participate in the survey. The broader participation we have, the better the survey results will be on reflecting what the town wants. Uh, the goal is to be done with the vision statement and have it adopted uh by June. Hopefully to be working concurrently on the land use portion. We have a census that is, results are coming out. I think it's due in April, so we can start to pull those together. And there's also various economic information from the state of New Hampshire. So that can start to inform the land use section and then also to have those write-ups coming in during April and so that those would be ready for adoption. We all know that volunteers are wonderful and it's fantastic. But if you really kind of put some urgency into a letter, and I did draft a, an invitation that you can use either it as it is or in any way that you want to modify it um in order to invite people or urge them strongly to be involved, that would be fantastic. I'm happy to take any questions you might have and other members of the master plan committee who are present certainly are welcome to speak.
All right, any questions for Annie?
Yeah, great idea, long overdue. Um, and honestly, this is the first other than today. First, something's beeping on with this. First I've heard of this, so this is great news. How did the steering committee, like, how does that, who appointed who? What what went on? What did I miss?
Okay. The master plan is under the purview of the um planning board.
Right.
So the planning board is first established its ability, changes its rules so that it can have a subcommittee because it's been something that we just haven't had time to do as in our regular meetings. So the rules for having a subcommittee that was established for the planning board is that three, no more than three members of the playing board, so there would not be a quorum present, would be appointed to the master plan committee and then do the outreach for other citizens to be involved. And obviously all these department heads and committee heads and so forth.
Okay, so there's still room if there are townspeople who would like to be on the steering.
Oh, there is definitely, I mean.
Okay, just checking. Okay, good.
No, no, this is just, just the very beginning.
Yeah, because I remember when I was running, looking for the master plan and it was what, like eight pages? It was really short. It was good though, but it was really outdated.
Uh, the master plan is like this thick and it's sitting on a shelf in the planning board office. It's not online. It's not used by anybody. It's not, one of the goals here is to have something which is friendly, user-friendly, online, usable and something that the Board of Selectmen, the various departments, um, the planning board certainly can refer to in regulations and in setting plans and in doing budgets and everything else. It should drive what's going on in the town.
And will the steering committee be posting their minutes on the website as well? Will they get their own page?
Yes, yes. Diane, set that up. Jim Doggett had set up as kind of a sub-tab on the planning, on the planning board. But uh, I understand Diane has set one up on the, on the main page too.
Yeah, that's correct. I felt that you were going to have too many, um, you would have minutes and agendas and stuff and it seemed more logical to just put you on your own page.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this subject? So would I, like, go ahead, who is that?
Uh, Matt, I was going to say something.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Uh, normally when we have our meetings, the night we have our meetings, uh, some of these individuals might be working at when we have our meeting. Would it be all right if we had an individual that, uh, let's say he had an hour or she had an hour left in their uh work period that they could come to the meeting? If they're representing somebody, representing the board and that we pay, we pay them the regular pay because they're on the clock? I mean, that would be an incentive, don't you think?
So you're thinking of like a firefighter, Charlie, or or a policeman?
Yeah, or or someone from the transfer station, uh, even someone from the road agent. You know, if they, if if they were going to come there and it was the time that we're having it. Because we, basically when we have our meetings, Annie, we're, these departments can't make it there because there, a lot of them are working. I'm just saying, I've given an incentive for them to show up. That's all.
Have you, Annie, have you given any thought to a schedule of when you'd have these meetings?
Yeah, uh, we're, um, and we've cleared it with Diane for cable and also with Jim Doggett and with the planning board. We'll be having them on the third Thursday of each month, so one meeting a month. Uh, there will be work being done in between and then brought to the plant, brought to the master, the master plan committee. I would, I would say, put a caveat out here that everybody understands that the master plan subcommittee has absolutely no authority or ability to make any decisions. Any recommendations they make would go to the planning board. The planning board would then go through, maybe kick them back, whatever. But eventually there would be a public hearing by the planning board before adoption of any um, of any action.
All right, any additional questions? I think, I think Charlie, to your point, we have to kind of keep that on a case-by-case basis because while there may be people who that, that does include, there'll be plenty of people who don't get paid for any of this stuff. Uh, do it just to kind of give back to the town. That's.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm doing. But uh, if we're going to get anybody from the transfer station, uh, they all work until seven o'clock and the meeting starts at six. And I I was just figuring, we're talking once a month. That's not a lot of money.
Yeah, that, that's why, that's why I say case-by-case basis because, I mean, do you envision having the need for somebody from the transfer station to attend every single one of these meetings?
No, I don't.
I'm not asking you, Charlie.
I don't know how the whole committee feels.
Right, I'm, I'm asking Annie.
For myself.
Right. Annie, what do you think?
I'm a little concerned about the precedent that we might be setting. Um, when we did the fire station building committee, um, did we pay any of the town employees their hourly wage to participate in that committee? Or um, we had another committee before that. I I'm just concerned about some kind of precedent. And then that's really about it, my only concern.
Mr. Chair, so.
First, go ahead.
Just to answer Lisa, yeah, you're right. I think the only one that we paid was actually the secretary that took the minutes of our meetings. We we did elect to do that on those building committees and the safety complex and joint loss committee, all those meetings.
So Matt, in answer to your question um about attendance, frankly, I think that unless there, I'm hoping there'll be a lot of citizens involved. I'm hoping that the um, various boards and committees will write up their um pieces and that they will um, you know, make sure that as many people as possible participate in the surveys. As far as attendance at meetings, I would say that as citizens, if they're interested in contributing on other levels, that would be fine. But what what I think that our committee, when we got together and talked about it, what we really wanted was to have that participation as far as the surveys and as far as updating the information. And happy to have them come or not, but I would say as private citizens.
Okay.
If I could speak, Edvin Kralik, I'm part of the subcommittee.
Go ahead, Edvin.
Um, so just one thing I wanted to add. I mean, as someone who's kind of new to this, I I'd want someone like Jack from the transfer station to be available. And that's, I think, why uh, we're asking for this, to allow town employees. Um, you know, Jack's got a lot of wealth of knowledge of this town of zoning regulations and it would be such a, a waste of talent if we weren't able to have him contribute to the um, to the master plan.
Sure, yeah. So I guess I would propose this to the board. Again, if uh, if we put out this letter to the board seeking volunteers, as far as paying people to go to meetings, can we table that until we see what response we get as far as uh, people uh volunteering for this?
I'll go along with that, Matt.
Okay. Everybody else?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So uh, Kate, Larry, you're cool with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Kate, go like this? Perfect. Um, so what I would um be looking for is if we have a kind of a model letter out in our our shared folder to start with, and we might just want to tweak it a little bit. But I'd like to see if the board would be okay. I'll make this a motion, Diane. I would move to allow the chair to sign a letter or well, a memo, excuse me, to be sent to all departments and committees. Uh, you know, introducing the master plan committee and the initiative in order to get uh cooperation.
I'll second that.
I think Larry was first, so Larry's the second. Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote. Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous. So we uh, will work with you kind of offline, Annie, on this letter and hopefully get it out this week.
Thank you so much. Thank all of you. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving right along. Let me pull my agenda back up here. And uh, so we have, I believe we have uh Alan Cludier, who is an engineer involved with the um, actually, did I skip one? I skipped one, but I I said Alan's name, so so sorry to the fire chief, but I'll, I'll come back to you. So the continuation from the last meeting, we talked about the town of Merrimack and some signs they were going to end up placing regarding trucks. And I believe Diane reached out to the town of Merrimack and put us in touch with the, these folks, this engineering firm that can answer some of our questions rely, relating to the exclusion of heavy commercial vehicles. So if it's all right, uh, Mr. Cludier, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds great. Everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, so just as a little bit of a background and kind of even where this all started. So for any community in Massachusetts that wants to put in a heavy vehicle exclusion, you have to get permission for MASTDOT. And as part of the MASTDOT, well, at least if you want to actually have an exclusion. If you put up signs without anything, you know, you theoretically couldn't ticket somebody that was actually using it. And the town of Merrimack has a few of these roads that are really narrow. They're winding. They're not roads that are appropriate for uh, for heavy vehicles. So as part of the process with MASTDOT, we have to put together a little bit of a report. We have to identify other routes uh that they should be taking. Um, and as part of that route, you know, obviously we have Bear Hill Road that goes through uh the town of Newton. Um, if any part of that alternative route, well, I say alternative route, where the proper route falls outside of the town boundaries, then we, uh, MASTDOT requires um a letter of, you know, permission or consent from the neighboring town. Um, you know, to make sure that you're not just kind of pushing the problem somewhere else. Um, so that's kind of where the report came, came from. And and I know you guys have already looked at the report. Um, I kind of want to clear up um some of the things that I heard, um, you know, from looking at the video before. So the alternative routes don't need to be signed. Um, really, the only signage that we're talking about here is putting signs on the routes that we are not going to allow trucks. Um, so there won't, the, the alternative route we identified does have to be signed as the route and we will not be putting, you know, signs at 495 to try to tell people to go that way. Um, but identifying the route's important because, you know, Mast dot won't, they won't accept, uh, you know, well, where are the trucks going to go? I don't know. We have to tell them where they should be and there has to be a viable route. You know, um, I mean, in this instance, these roads that we're trying to prohibit them are, you know, extremely narrow. Um, I I wouldn't, I don't understand why a truck driver would drive down it more than once. You know, you'd think that one time would be enough to to scare you, but um, but unfortunately that's happening. So um, so what I was hearing before was, you know, some people were concerned about, you know, trucks, that they were going to encourage trucks to use some of these other roads. And it's not in, except for the fact that we're telling them not to use West Hadley Road, Hadley Road, you know, um, those roadways. I think now, if anybody has any questions, maybe that'll probably be the better part of this discussion.
Yeah, so Kate, go ahead. Looks like Kate has her hand up.
Um, so just to, you talk about that you only have signs where the no heavy traffic can go. You're talking about Wentworth. And well, Hadley, and you mean in Massachusetts, right? Because isn't it up to new, I mean, it's silly not to have them both ways because a truck could come down one and then suddenly to turn around.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, and um, so, you know, we could do this two ways. We could put signs up in Merrimack on the roads. Um, but still, even for that, for those to be legal and, you know, justifiable. But still, even for that, for those to be legal and, you know, justifiable, we need permission from, from Newton.
Okay.
Just to even on our roads.
Okay. The other thing I know people, because I know we had a correspondence with one of the D O T guys. I have his name here, not, was his name, give me a second, Roger. Who said that it's really important that we, what did he wrote? Hold on.
You're, you're talking about N H D O T, Kate?
Yeah, N H D O T, where he said it's really important that we, I'm so sorry, I haven't written that. Anyway, back, I'll get to that. Traffic, okay, so look, I was studying the map copiously. And a lot of people, when they are coming, you know, from Newton through Newton down into Mass, will take one oh eight right to four ninety-five. Anyway, some of them, depending on their GPS, will go down Bear Hill and some will do this hokey thing. So I guess people knew to be concerned, like, how, do you have any studies or guestimates on how many of these heavy vehicles are using these small roads? It sounds to me like it might be not many. Do you have any information on that?
I have to kind of pull it up. So we, we did actually do some gathering of information for that of, on Hadley Road, West Hadley Road, Birch Meadow. And they were basically around six percent of the traffic was heavy vehicles. I mean, they're not really heavy volume roadways, you know, they're, you know, about a thousand per day or some, something like that. But it's, you know, the, with the nature of the roadway, you know, they really don't support trucks at all. You know, they're about eighteen feet wide, the roadways.
Right, so six percent of heavy vehicles are taking those little plenty routes, you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, we, we're talking, you know, that's about sixty trucks a day.
Okay. Here's the thing. So the DOT recommended the town of Newton should still review the route for any potential adverse impacts to town infrastructure activities and a butters and provide their opinion on the proposal. So that is still, it's not against what you're saying, it makes sense. That's still a step I would like to see happen. And I also noted that Roger at D O, oh God, excuse me, I've got all these notes. They did it, uh, we have a Roger Appleton at D O T didn't address one of our questions, which was, we have a intersection project with the New Hampshire D O T where one oh eight, so, you know, South Main and Amesbury comes in and Maple. And I just would want to double check, I actually sent an email to Toby, who's the one who presented to us, just to make sure, because I was, all it means is more trucks will be coming up Bear Hill than Amesbury. Uh, and going straight rather than making the left. So on our end, it will be taking, depends with people off South Main. And if that would impact what kind of intersection they want to put in for safety reasons, like, it's going to change where the majority of traffic comes. So I just shot a quick email to him, asking if he had any input because that concerned us.
Wouldn't say it's going to change the majority of traffic, you know, and these are not going to be, you know, blocking all vehicles. It's just going to be the, the heavy vehicles and those heavy vehicles from Hadley Road or that are currently on Hadley Road.
Right.
So, you know, we're, we're not talking big numbers, it's just that, you know, with those heavy vehicle trucks do, you know, around these curves on this, on these narrow roads.
Yeah.
Are more something that isn't really capacity issue. It's really more of a safety issue on the, on the narrow roadways. And, and it's also, it doesn't impact, you know, delivery trucks or anything like that. So anybody that is, you know, making a delivery, you know, in the local area, you know, if you're getting a refrigerator delivered or something like that or removing, it doesn't apply to that. It's.
Looks like we have a resident, Mr. Robert, raising his hand. Did you have a question? I think you have to.
Yes, yeah. Good evening. No, I'm with Alan, I'm Bob Sinabaldi, the DPW Director and Building Commissioner here in Merrimack.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, no, I mean, you know, we appreciate you folks hearing us for sure. You know, one of the biggest concerns outside of a safety issue is that these roads just aren't meant to hold up this kind of vehicle. You know, we spent eighty thousand dollars the year before on Heath Road and that is already starting to break. You know, when, when this was Essex County and the old county roads, Bear Hill was the designated route for the heavy equipment vehicles. So, I mean, we're just trying to get, one, it's safe and two, that we'd like to redo all these roads. But I really can't see spending the money to get these roads done if they're just not going to last a period of time. As you folks all know, you just did it on Thornel. You know, which now, geez, you know, that nice new road, I would think that would take all kinds of weight.
Yeah, right. So, so I think I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. I think when last we talked about this, we're kind of leaning towards some sort of a, a public hearing, if for no other reason than that it's announced to people, this is what we're talking about, this is when we're talking about it. And we're pretty much only going to be talking on this subject. And, you know, if you're on any of these streets, you can come down and listen and talk about it. Is that where the board's still going?
Matt, I, man, I've got something to say.
Charlie, go.
I turned around and I went over to Kingston, to the D O T over there in Kingston. And my reason why I went over there is I asked, I wondered why there was a no parking sign at Wentworth Drive. Because I've lived in Newton for fifty-two years and there hasn't been a no parking sign on one oh eight from the Placso Line all the way to East Kingston. And when I was there, I was discussing with the, the head guy over there about the signage that what Merrimack wants to do is put the note through trucking. And they basically said, he basically said to me, he says, they cannot put a sign on our property. So they, they got that twelve feet in. So now where, where that sign goes is people going to be able to go down there and they're going to get halfway down there and then there's going to be a sign that says, and they can't turn around. And they're not going to, they said the same thing, they weren't going to allow one over on Hadley Road. And that, that's our Hadley Road. So this is, this is going to be a confusion here.
Well, I think there's something that we can deal with that. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, and I, I, I feel the same way in the sense about the trucks going over, over that road. And I know the neighbors down there have had a problem with the trucks going over that road because they're going too fast and everything else and they beat up the road. So, I mean, I don't know what the state's going to do. The state says that, you know, you can't put them in there right away. So would that confuse the truck driver that drives across that and don't realize it? You know, and there's going to be a lot of.
I thought you were done.
I am now.
I think we could do a few things. So first of all, we mentioned, you know, putting the signs in Merrimack on these roads. Now, what also makes sense is, and you know, so I guess that's the minimum, then that's kind of the minimum that we're asking. What does make sense is to also post signs in in Newton, you know, because, you know, we, we got a little bit of a, you know, spur of the road that's actually in Newton. So it would make more sense to sign them as well on there. Again, not signing, telling people to, you know, that, you know, these other routes are truck route, but really putting in that, that no truck sign, you know, close to right at the entrance of, of that, right off of Bear Hill Road. That makes a lot of sense to, you know, not confuse people. Also, what's going to probably happen is I imagine that some truck drivers might turn down here and, you know, the first time they might not realize it and hopefully they do on the second time. The other thing is actually having an established truck route. I believe when some of these truckers, they have access to, you know, some information that shows where there's no truck routes. But I think that'll only be established truck exclusions. And, you know, if the town of Merrimack just slapped up some signs, that, that, that wouldn't be a, you know, legal, you know, truck exclusion route, so. Yeah.
Hello?
Kate?
Okay.
I just wanted to piggyback off what Charlie said. So again, for, this is from our N H D O T in Durham. After review of the exclusion, they don't have any issues with the impact to the roadways regarding increase in volumes or types of traffic. That was not in regard to the intersection thing. Sorry, you guys don't know about that, but it's a long story here. Please note, however, that there shall be no restrictions placed on N H dot roads. And there shall be no signage related to the exclusion route placed along an N H dot roadway. So that, that's a pickle, right?
No, 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 because.
So again, you're like, they're driving, okay, because they can't, they're going up, they're going north. They're already not going your roads, it's not a problem on the other end. It's, the problem is if they're going down from north to south and they take that turn on our roads and come then to your Hadley, et cetera. They, and they, knowing them, they'll just go anyway, let's be honest. But if they see the sign and they can't turn around, that could be a problem. So we'll have to talk about that later because it's hard to take in.
Yeah, so wouldn't, the sign would be on Hadley Road, you know?
Right, on your side.
Hadley Road.
Right, but not on our side.
Yeah, if you want it, you can have a sign.
I know, but if the N H D O T, oh, right, that's one oh eight, sorry, never mind.
No, no, and yeah, we would not be putting any signs and we would not recommend any signage on one oh eight at all.
Yeah, of course it can't be. I got confused from it, I apologize.
Yeah.
For the signage, that's.
We would, we would pay, we would pay for all your signs and we would maintain them.
Thank you so much. I'm sure the town people will want to know that.
Yeah, the, so we get money from Massachusetts, so that's a good thing.
Very rare.
The, the, so my question is basically, I, I think you said at the start of this meeting, so what you need to proceed is basically a letter from us saying it's okay to do what you're describing.
Absolutely.
So I think where I was going with this is, do we want to, in the interest of transparency with the town, we could have that public hearing just to make sure the townspeople aren't, you know, totally shocked when they see these signs going up. And if there is a, you know, you know, a certain segment of the population who doesn't think this is a good idea, whatever, we'll hear from them. Is that where I want to go?
I concur. And I'm, I'm really need to hear from Toby, the one who we've been dealing with about, just to be safe, you know, I'm not against it per se, but there's always unintended consequences you wish you checked beforehand, so. And I'll be glad to hear from him and have him say, sure, no problem.
And that's what it is.
But I'm not going to do anything till I hear from him.
And that's what I'd like to do is just to get all the facts before we do anything. I, I, I know it slows the process for you guys, but that's, and I think what we need to do. Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, can you say, tell me who Toby is?
Hold on, yeah. So we have a whole nother project relating to an intersection, so really.
Right, right, where your four-way stop sign or another road.
Exactly, and the, the, the A, the D O T person who was in charge of the project and did the presentation, Toby, last name, it's coming to Wentworth, I can't remember, I've got to write it down somewhere.
That's fine, that's all right, so.
He is, and you know, like, sometimes someone says it's fine, but they forgot to check, like, they don't all know what everyone's doing. So just want to make sure he's aware this is something we're thinking of doing. He'll probably say, sure, so they're making a straight rather than left, it doesn't impact anything. But we, I do think we need to let them know because I paid for them to say, hey, we have your project ready. Because it's, we're not paying for it and they'll be like, wait, what did you do? Just to be safe.
All right, so, go ahead.
I said, no, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so other members of the board, do you, is this the way you want to go? Set up a public hearing?
Yeah.
I think it's the right thing to do. We did a public hearing for the intersection and that's not something we even have a say over because it's D O T. However, they did come to us, they did do the public hearing. And the residents were able to ask their questions and understand what exactly was going on and what the effect would be.
Right. I think, looking at the calendar, this is probably going to be, have to be something we do in March would be the next opportunity. So if you, like, that first week of March, I don't know what it ends up being, March second. We could do it a seven o'clock public hearing of our normal meeting, if that makes sense.
Wouldn't we need Mike to be there?
Yeah, well, we'll need a lot of people there.
Okay, good.
So we'd have plenty of time to get the word out on this, so is that what people want to do?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I guess for tonight, what we have to leave you guys with is we'll be in touch regarding scheduling of a, a public hearing, which will likely be a hybrid in person as well as Zoom and cable. So if you guys don't want to cross the border that night, you can do this again. So but any other questions on this subject?
So will you guys be contacting Toby, I guess, ahead of time to?
I emailed him already.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we thank you gentlemen for coming and clearing some stuff up for us. Always best to hear it directly from the source and I guess we'll be in touch.
Okay, if you have any.
Thank you, guys. And like we said, I'm sure you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, so if you want to drop off, have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you. So Diane, if you could put in the minutes, let's look at March, I have that right, March second, I believe, is our first meeting in March. Maybe look at a, at a seven o'clock public hearing.
Yes, that's March second, correct.
Cool. All right, so I think the fire chief has waited long enough. So Chief, I believe you have a, you're looking to get us sign off on a quote you have for a grant writer. Is that correct?
Negative. What, what I need the board to do, thank you for having me, I need the board to approve the department head to sign this agreement with, I, first respond to grants LLC. We have, we had an agreement with another grant writer. Unfortunately, that grant writer is booked. And so what happens is the fire chief does the grant, then we have either the other grant writer that, again, for twenty twenty is unavailable. They will review, you have all the paperwork in the agreement, what they do. I just need, since the department heads can't sign agreements, I just need the authorization to go ahead and sign the agreement.
Okay. We have the, we have the quote, right, in our shared draft there, guys.
The, the quote, just so the board knows, the quote was standard. If you're awarded a grant, you get that money's back. If you look at my budget, there's a line item which goes with the FEMA requirement for a grant writer for reimbursement. So if we're awarded a grant, it costs us nothing.
Matt, Charlie, I've already had this discussion with him and I don't really have a problem.
Anybody else with any questions?
Now, this is a one-year agreement, correct?
Correct. The other one, I did the same thing because department heads cannot sign agreements. I went in front of the board, got approval by the board for me to sign it. And once you did it once, the other year, when she sent it to us, I just signed it. I didn't go back in front of the board, you guys approved it once, I just signed it. If not, if the board wants a board member to sign it, that is fine. All that does is cause a delay because then next year, because we're going to go for grants every year as long as I'm chief, that just means next year, we got to have, I got to bring it back to the board, have this discussion, if we use the exact same company and so on and so on.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with if we have the chief sign it, but does anybody want to make a motion?
I actually have another question first. The contract allows for sixteen hours of consultant's time? I do not see a rate for over sixteen hours?
It is a flat rate per FEMA requirements for the Assistant to Firefighter Grant. A grant writer can only charge a municipality fifteen hundred dollars max. That's why it's fifteen hundred dollars.
All right, then I would make a motion to authorize the fire chief to sign. All right, then I would make a motion to authorize the fire chief to sign the contract for AGSP.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's and I, that's unanimous. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you, have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Thanks, all right, continuing along with our agenda, I'm going to skip over F, because she's been waiting patiently, and I'm going to let Trish do the EOC update in G. See if we can get some people off that don't have to stay the whole time, but Trish, if you would.
Okay, thank you. So, before I give this report, and I've changed it up a little bit, and I'll tell you why. I kind of feel the need to explain the purpose of the COC report, it started out about 11 months ago with Larry and I keeping the Board of Selectmen very informed with multiple phone calls, conferences, webinars that we were having daily. The idea, and this is to go out there in TV land, the idea was to give everybody a timely update on items that could actually affect the operation of the town during a pandemic. And to do this while we were in a public meeting, hoping it would help residents and town officials. I get that, I may be boring sometime, although I did promise Matt and Diane I might sing tonight, just to, you know, give you a little talent. But again, it's about life safety issues here. After our last meeting, last, the last selectmen's meeting, everybody was leaving before my report, which I get, that's okay. However, on the way out, I heard someone say, why is she bothered doing the report, because everybody can look the stuff up? So, part of that is true. I just want to clarify that certainly the numbers that I've been giving you, the state and New Hampshire numbers, yeah, you don't need me for that. And actually, tonight, I'm not going to give them to you. But what you can't get, or what everybody can't get, is the fact that Larry and I spend a lot of time, direct and regular communication daily with Homeland Security, CDC, the AG's office, Primex, NHMA, State Public Health, and it kind of puts the, the EOC in the driving seat. So we get to know stuff that's going on with other municipalities or in the AG's office or CDC, and we're briefed and prepared to advise the selectmen, just in case you guys need to change something kind of on the fly. As we've said a million times, this is a very fluid situation we're in. So I felt the need to say that after I heard that person make the comment after last meeting, to hopefully under, help people understand that, yeah, this can be boring, but the idea is to give the selectmen kind of something to chew on, just in case you guys have to make a decision.
First, can I just jump in there real quick, sorry?
Sure.
I, that's disturbing to hear that somebody said that, because.
Yes, it was to me too.
You know, I, I think these are very important, as you said 11 months ago, the, we started these things, they've evolved. I think it's important because the information comes out of the fire hose, right?
Right.
We can't, we can't possibly know how much of it is going to affect us, and the reason why we want Trish and Larry in these meetings talking about this is because they can kind of zero in on the stuff that, that affects us and we need to make decisions about, so. So I, I think I speak for the board in saying, these are important updates, and whoever said that was wrong, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. So typically, like, like I said, I usually, oops, did I hear somebody? No, okay. I usually give the state numbers, and it's right, you guys, you can look at that, I'm, PBT, people out in TV land, do your own thing. So instead, what I'm going to do is, we're going to dial it down to local, so let's talk about Newton. First of all, Newton School District, we have no active cases, none, that's great news. The cumulative Newton, we have 247. We have 31 new cases in Newton in the last 14 days. Newton deaths, unfortunately, the data for deaths has to be suppressed to protect privacy, if it's between 1 and 4. So the good news, if there is any, is it's between 1 and 4, or that's the bad news, the good news is, we're not over that, because then we'd be giving you actual numbers, which is pretty scary. We wanted to share total residents tested, so yes, Newton, we've had 257 antigen tests. We've had 2,711 PCR tests, 146 antibody tests, and in the last four, seven days, 4.1% of Newton residents that went out and took a test, either antigen or PCR, tested positive. So this is a little different than I usually do, I think maybe it dials it down to us, and maybe that's more important. So I wasn't going to give the state and New Hampshire numbers, because you guys can see that unless somebody, you know, is, is very moved about New Hampshire numbers, I can give them all to you. I'm going to skip down to the regular part of my report. So Homeland Security, unfortunately, as you've seen on the news, Larry and I have spent hours on the phone with people having problems with the vaccine, with the vaccines and the doses. You know, they get one dose, and then they're supposed to get the second dose within, you know, 21 to 28 days of the first, and they're being booked out eight weeks, nine weeks, whatever. So we're constantly spending time on the phone and calling Homeland Security. So on our call, on our legal call, they talked about it, they said they're experiencing huge amount of issues, however, they're expanding their fixed sites in a few towns, and they're looking for assistance with vaccinators. They've also purchased some new software to help with the scheduling of shifts for these vaccinations. And here you go, anyone who wants another job, because we're not busy enough, they've negotiated a new contract, and for those that want to work, you can be paid up to $65 an hour, there you go. Isn't that cool? So, like, we all don't have enough to do. The other thing is, on these calls that we've had with Homeland Security, CDC, Public Health, the registration process is very confused, yeah, I don't know if anyone on the phone here has tried it yet, it's very confusing. They are saying, for the people that we opened up to in 1B that were 65 and over, and probably looking at everyone on this call, that meant me, I don't know, but they said that you are allowed to put two people on, so if, let's say I put myself on as a vaccine, I could, recipient, I could put my husband on, but then you were supposed to get a pre-registration, so what they didn't explain to people is, when you add somebody to your little list, there's only one email that comes as a pre-registration, you're not going to get a second pre-registration for that other person you wanted to bring with you, say, in my case, my husband. They said it's causing so much confusion, they think they're going to do away with that second pre-registration completely, so just so that you know, be patient, they're probably going to do away with that. They, they said, they have some employees who are eligible through the Phase 1B, but never got their confirmation for their appointment, so Larry and I have had numerous of our own first responders here in town that that happened to them, we were able to help them through that. If there are any first responders that are listening to this in TV land, if you're having a problem, you can call Larry or I, and we can help you get through that. There was another question that if a patient scheduled an appointment for the second dose, in order to, they have to cancel that appointment if they want to see if there's an earlier dose, an earlier date for a vaccine sooner, so that's causing a huge problem, actually, Larry was working with somebody earlier tonight, and then I was later tonight, that that happened to them, they got their first vaccine on January 26th. They were able to schedule the next appointment on March 23rd, which was eight weeks out. And then they were told by 211, which is completely overwhelmed, to cancel, like this says, you got to cancel that appointment, so you can get an early appointment. So they followed the directions, canceled it, and their new appointment ended up being April 3rd, go figure. So it was even worse than the first one. So this is happening all the time, if anyone contacts you as a town official and they're having issues, feel free to have them reach out to Larry or I, and we'll see how we can help them. There's also another process, they haven't figured out how to handle. If you're, if you don't currently have a license, you, you know, you need ID to get in, they don't know how to handle that yet, they're looking for other acceptable means of identification. They also haven't figured out how to address students way to establish residency, so they haven't worked, worked out that, but they're, they said they'll let us know, maybe by next week. We got a lot of phone calls, people have been very angry with the 211. I felt bad, this little old lady had to be 92 years old, I spent time on the phone with her, probably 992, the way she sounded, and very frustrated with the 211, and of course, didn't have a computer. So again, we're, we're helping people through that, we're also working right now with local businesses where, that are calling with questions on the new emergency orders, which I just want to run by. So there's a new number 74 and number 81. So 74 has been extended to March 26th of this year, and this is about face coverings when unable to social distance of at least three, three feet. It says, all persons over the age of five within the state of New Hampshire shall wear a mask or cloth face covering over their nose and mouth anytime they are in public spaces indoors or outdoors where they are unable to or do not consistently maintain a physical distance of at least six feet from persons outside their own households. For the purpose of this order, the term "public spaces" includes any part of private or public property that's generally open or accessible to members of the general public. It includes, but not limited to, lobbies, waiting areas, outside plazas, patios, restaurants, retail businesses, streets, sidewalks, parks, beaches, elevators, restrooms, stairways, and parking garages. Another positive note here is Larry actually has been working on bringing the vaccine to Newton. We have been confirmed that we're on the list to maybe have the vaccine come here. Larry's working with the Portsmouth Fire Department on this. We don't have a definitive yet, we don't have a time, we've just told we're on the list. But again, as I've said before, we're in fluid situation here, everything changes every day, we'll keep you posted, but if we can pull that off, that'll be great for Newton. Another, the newest emergency order, number 83, is about local elections, and I thought the Board of Selectmen, actually, I, I pulled out pieces of this because it's rather important. And one of the key components is the moderator, or his or her designee, may begin the process of absentee ballots prior to the opening of the polls, provided the clerk shall post in an appropriate public space 48 hours prior to the election, not including Sundays or holidays. A copy of the notice has to be provided to the Secretary of State. The parcel processing of absentee ballots prior to the election shall occur on the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Monday prior to the date of the election, after the posting of the checklist. The moderator shall be assisted by at least three other election officers as defined by RSA 652:14. Members of the general public actually may observe this process, however, under no circumstances shall absentee ballots be counted prior to the opening of the polls. And then the other emergency order that I wanted to end with is the travel emergency order and guidelines for municipalities, number 72 has been extended also to March 26th. And it says, New Hampshire employers and New Hampshire employees must comply with the updated guidance, which includes the following. Persons who report close contact with someone with COVID-19 or those reporting travel risk factors as outlined in the screening questions must not be allowed into any facility unless they are eligible for the exceptions to the guarantee outlined in the emergency order. A person could be allowed off quarantine and back to work at least 10 days have passed after their last exposure to a person that was infected with COVID-19. It also, this emergency order also says that employee illness and risk screening that businesses in New Hampshire should be asking screening questions to access risks for COVID-19 every single day before an employee is allowed to come into work. And so those emergency orders obviously can be seen online, I pulled out the stuff that I thought as selectmen that would be pertinent for you to know. And that's it for my report.
All right, again, thank you. And, you know, thank you for your efforts, you know, a lot of people have to understand that at the municipal level, at the local level, there's a lot that our EMD people do every day with this pandemic. You know, I think on the news, we tend to see the, the, the greater, the larger story, but on the local level, they're doing a lot, and I think I I said in one of the last meetings, we've been getting a lot of money back, this was an expensive pandemic, and thanks to EMD and the record-keeping by the department heads working together, we're getting reimbursed, so the town report's going to have all that good stuff.
Thank you.
Matt.
Charlie.
Matt. And as residents have been getting in touch with me, and I've been sending them to them, and they've been taking care of them right away.
Nice, yeah.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah, they are. They, they didn't necessarily sign up for this, you know, they signed up to be EMD, but not, not this kind of the, the level of work, I'm sure you've never done this before with storms or anything like that, so.
Right.
You know.
And Charlie's right, one of the people that we were helping today actually reached out to Charlie because he's our representative, so that was great that somebody has reached out because they were so frustrated with what was going on with the vaccine, reached out to Charlie.
Yeah, it's, the, the vaccine thing needs to improve quickly, and hopefully, that's going to happen. All right, so I'm going to move on down the list. And I believe we have the snow removal at the library and Town Hall. So just to update people on this one, we you know, back a few years ago, there was the five-member board. I think we had three of us that are currently on the board, we're on that five-member board. And the custodian at that point was being asked to take over the cleaning of I know the police department, I think it included the Town Hall as well, so the 25-hour custodian, we voted as a board to take snow removal out of that job description. And I believe it was five to zero, we voted in favor of that. And then the snow removal was picked up, I believe at the time, we had a transfer station employee that did it for a while, then we had kind of an all-hands-on-deck thing, and for a while, the road crew was doing it, and in one of these meetings, we heard from the the road agent that he doesn't necessarily have a problem doing this where he can, but the priority is the roads and clearing the roads, and as you saw today, we had a situation where we ended up closing the Town Hall because we knew snow removal was going to be an issue, and we didn't want to create a liability, so if we had the extra time where the road crew could worry about the roads getting those cleared and move on to that. So it comes back to this discussion about fixing the problem with at least a Band-Aid to get us through this season. I believe we put out the request on a couple of social media platforms and the town website, and no interest in taking on this job, and I think we've gotten a couple of quotes from some vendors. So the board kind of needs, needs to make a decision, hopefully tonight, because we skirted one storm, about what we want to do, at least until the end of this winter, as far as snow removal at the Town Hall and Library. Kate?
Sorry to interrupt, what town websites, I didn't see it posted.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I saw it, Diane, it was on the.
It was?
Was it, Diane?
Sorry. I couldn't understand what Kate asked.
I was wondering which town websites it was posted on.
It's on the homepage. And Matt, I reached out to that person that was on Facebook.
Yep.
And told him to call, contact the, texted me that he was interested, so I will talk to him tomorrow.
Okay, good.
Great, so I heard this today on Facebook and the Town of Doon, a couple people saying they'd be up for shoveling, so I wrote their names.
Yeah, that was one of them, probably.
Okay.
I think. I think really what we need, hold on Charlie, um, what we really need to do tonight, what I would ask the board is. Can we approve a budget for this? Cause if we if we keep kicking this can up the road to the next. Select board meeting, we're probably gonna have more snow. So I think what I'd like to see the board do is approve a budget and then we can get the right people in place, Charlie, what were you gonna say?
I went there this morning at right around eight o'clock. Cause I was gonna shovel it out if it wasn't done. And it was all shoveled out, it was uh, sanded and the back deck was all shoveled off. And then I left there and there was a girl down there shoveling out the uh, library.
Wow, we need to find the name of the Samaritan.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure it was a Good Samaritan as much as it was either our custodian or our road crew who uh. Like I said, they'll help whether they can, but it's a question of.
Charlie, didn't you say you saw a woman doing it?
Huh?
Charlie, didn't you say you saw a woman doing it?
A young girl, yeah.
A young girl, that's not the road crew, Matt.
No.
At the library.
This was at the library.
Okay, okay.
I think she's been doing it all year, Matt.
Why don't we hire her?
We should.
Oh, that was a lot of snow.
Yeah.
Now, how about we budget a thousand bucks for the last, for the end of the year?
Yeah, I'm I'm worried we might need a little more than that, but.
I I would kind of with Charlie on that, I was looking, I know I'm, you know, we gotta find someone, but it. There are some rates we've been getting that are really high, I constantly googling, what's a normal rate for shoveling? Twenty-five to seventy-five an hour. I am not, I know we need it and I don't want the women, you know, it's. Who are working at town hall to do it. But I also don't think I want to throw a big bill on the taxpayers, so I'm more in Charlie's thing and and just. We cast our net widely quickly and see what happens, you know, we see.
Yeah, I think, I think the key thing we have to keep in mind is the, we've casted the wide net. Secondly, we have to keep in mind that I think a lot of us have in mind the teenagers who do this. For, you know, twenty bucks or whatever, who we couldn't use because they're not insured. And also they're, you know, they're in school or whatever. We basically need to have a budget that would allow us to rely on somebody to do this work. Is what we're looking.
I don't believe everything on Google, but they are saying twenty-five to seventy an hour. For snow removal services, which implies in short, doesn't mean it's true, but please, can't we just cast one more net?
Why can't we do a thousand dollar budget at twenty dollars an hour and they'll come out to one thousand, then if we need more, we can just visit that at that time.
I would say up twenty-five an hour, honestly.
Kate, just to go back, what what other net do you want to cast, you're saying?
Well, there's two, there's a, I will, I'm not gonna say it publicly, but I will send it to Diane, another name from, two other names from the town page, sometimes. You post on the town page and it just scrolls so much, you miss things.
Okay.
Um, Charlie, you should go after that young woman at the library and see if she is available for the job.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Bad wording, I meant find out if, I mean, oh yeah, insurance, insurance, sorry.
Well, Kate, I think, I think what Charlie saw was probably one of the librarians that works there. Which is is not a solution, is not a solution, that.
No, 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 that's not a solution, I agree.
Yeah, so Larry, Larry was just saying, you're saying like seventy an hour out of a thousand, whatever that.
He said twenty an hour, didn't he?
He said twenty an hour.
I think that's what pushing it, I say.
I think twenty-five, I think twenty-five an hour is a good number, just like Kate said.
Okay.
Well, twenty-five an hour at a thousand would give us forty hours of snow shoveling. And then if that's not enough, we can take it up again in hopefully April where we won't need it.
Um, all right, anybody want to second that motion by Larry?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Um, any discussion? So uh, before we vote, so Diane, I guess we have the numbers to move forward with, I'm not optimistic. But uh, at least we have a budget set, so.
Yep.
But Matt, one one thing?
Yep.
The the girl at the library, I could see her two storms ago, I don't want to bump her out if she if she was hired by the library. So I don't want the new guy to take over her job, so we can reach out to the library and see who she is and what terms are that they hired her at.
That is a good point.
Unless she wants to get paid for it.
Absolutely, right.
Yeah, if uh, if either Diane or Nancy could inquire what that was all about, if it's what I think it is or it's. If it was a hire, then we should know.
She does get paid, but she only shovels the path, um, like at the door. And to go around to the front door, she doesn't shovel. The area that they need and she doesn't put, I don't think she can lift the sand buckets to put sand down.
All right, so there's motion on the floor, any other discussion? All right, roll call, vote, uh, Charlie.
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous, so we'll, we'll uh, Diane can update us as needed and as. Larry said, if if uh, if you need to come back to the board. Let's uh, let's have the board to commit to uh, getting together in a special meeting if if necessary. So this isn't just, you know, kick the can up the road.
Especially since there's another storm coming.
Yeah, Sunday, right?
I thought it was one inch, no?
Sunday night, there's another nor'easter.
Yeah, cool, that is exciting, so uh, keeping in that, I just want to do this really quick. The, you know, the board changes every year as we know, so a while back, the board decided we'd have the chair. Take the responsibility of decision-making on whether to close the town hall. Library is separate, remember that, library is its own thing. So the, we typically have the chair just make the unilateral decision to close the town hall, so we don't have to. Poll every member of the board, okay, so everybody's still cool with that?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and just to give a little background on it, the reason why the board did that. Is because usually that decision needs to be made sometimes very early in the morning, depending on when the bad weather hits. And we don't want to have to wait for him to be him or her to be able to reach the other board members in order to make that decision.
No, we just should be contacted afterwards so that we know if someone calls us.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, agreed.
So, so uh, moving on from that one, what what we did do. Was we decided we're gonna pull the board if we close the transfer station, the reason is. The transfer station is a little more of a. You know, I'll call it a um, a hot button for residents if it's closed all of a sudden. So my question is, do we want to change our method and. Take the approach that we do with the town hall for the transfer station, or do we want to continue to pull the board if we want to close the transfer station?
Uh, hmm, the transfer station lets you know too, don't they, and they communicate.
Well, they, sometimes, yes, they um, you know, the. Um, sometimes they'll give me a call and say, you know, what's, this is what the situation is on the ground down here. Uh, what can we do, so the question is, do we want to. Continue to have the chair, whoever the chair may be, may be in a in a short amount of time here. Do a polling of the board to do that or just the unilateral decision making?
I want to do a unilateral decision.
Thinking the same thing.
I mean, the the thing is, and I do the same thing with the town halls, I would consult the department head, like yesterday, we got on the phone with Mary Jo and. Nancy and Diane before we made that decision, so. You know, I would, as the chair, and I'm sure any chair would call Pete and say, Pete, what do you think, so?
Right, and the road agent as well, because even if the actual properties are fine, if the roads aren't, then.
Well, that's the thing is the uh, you know, um. A lot of times the road agent helps with clearing, you know, the right of, the right of ways or whatever over there, so Kate, go.
Typically, as the new person, we don't, do we typically have the transfer station open during nor'easters?
We have been.
Yeah, at times, yeah.
It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, it don't.
Personally, I mean, even if you just had them leave early, like the few hours and then close early, I just. That doesn't make sense to me, unless they want to stay up during nor'easter.
I don't think they'd want to, so um, I would move to allow the chair to make the uh. Decision as to whether to close the transfer station for storms, anybody want to second?
I will second.
I think Lisa, I think Charlie won, Lisa was still doing her second when Charlie jumped in, so. So Charlie's the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, I gotta do the thing, uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, great, so that's that's it for snow talk tonight. Typically, we don't get enough snow talk in the uh, summertime, so we gotta do more of it in the winter. All right, I have H, it's a land use change tax, anybody want to do these?
Do you want to post it there?
The amount is right there on the agenda. In the tax map.
See, the fourth, one thousand, wait.
Yeah, so um. We just need to accept it or approve it?
You need to approve it, you need to, we can electronically sign.
Okay, I move to sign the land use change tax for Tax Map one dash four dash six in the amount of. One thousand four hundred dollars, zero cents.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All those, I'm sorry, uh, roll call, vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Excuse me, Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt is an aye, so that's unanimous, next one?
I move to sign the land use change tax for Tax Map eight dash seven dash two in the amount of six hundred dollars, no cents.
Second.
Seconded by Larry, any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
I move to accept and expend unanticipated funds per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. For the food pantry in the amount of fifty dollars from Margaret Connors.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, the roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous. Okay, we have a new appoint, we have an appointment renewal for our health officer.
I move to reappoint Robert Leverone as health officer. Um, do we have a term?
Um, it's it's for three years and his current appointment expires on February sixth.
Okay. So I move to reappoint Robert Leverone as health officer until February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Seconded by Larry, any discussion? All right, we have roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that one's unanimous. Uh, we look like we have K is Gale Library, I believe these are just announcements, right? Is that correct?
No, you have to uh, you have to.
We have to appoint the trustees, yeah.
Okay, so it looks like the first one is a um, a resignation. Of a library trustee, which we can basically accept with thanks. And I don't believe we have to vote to accept the resignation though, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so uh, why don't we move on to B, Lisa, did you want to do B for the appointment?
The appointments, sure, uh, we have, okay, here's one. Um, I move to appoint Amanda Scott as library trustee. Effective for the year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Lisa? If there's another one? Oh, I'm in, I'm an aye, so that's unanimous.
And I would love to do the other one, but now it's being.
I've got it.
Okay, I I know it's to, I move to appoint Ann Banks as an alternate trustee. For the year of twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Second.
And the term will expire March, okay, can I see a question, I was just confused. The resignation was for the full-time job, right?
Yes, yes, Ann Banks, Ann Banks resigned, but she wants to remain on as a um. As a, what do you call it, alternate?
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's just like a full-time officer going part-time.
Cool.
Second.
All right, did I, did I call for a vote on that one, I don't think so.
No, not yet.
Okay, so Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous. Uh, let's move on then to other business, any other other business? I would say to, let's move on to the manifest. If anybody wants to start reading those off. Mine's still loading.
Yeah, I'm having uh.
All right, so I'll do it for you, so who wants to, Lisa?
Oh, I got it, hold on, I got it. It it it's a little slow in responding for me, but. I move to sign vendor manifest dated February two, twenty twenty-one in the amount of eight hundred seventy-nine thousand. Five hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, of which seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, no cents. Goes towards the February Sandborne Regional School District payment.
Second.
Can always tell when there's a school payment, okay, so cha- seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All right, roll call, vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye.
I move to sign cable vendor manifest dated February two, twenty twenty-one in the amount of nine hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
I've already signed one more.
Oh, good, Kate?
Uh, aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to sign police special details vendor manifest dated February two, twenty twenty-one in the amount of three hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
All right, I'll um, any discussion, no, we'll go to roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, unanimous.
I move to sign payroll manifest for pay period January seventeenth through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one with a pay date of February four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to sign requisition two zero two one zero zero two in the amount of two thousand three hundred seventy dollars and eighty-six cents. To purchase a new firewall and for installation at the fire station. Funds to come from the Cable Revolving Fund.
Second.
All right, and.
I I just want to say that firewall, we're talking a network firewall and not, you know, a wall, you know, for fire protection.
Yeah, do we need a mason? Um, so the, and those are magic words from the Cable Revolving Fund, so that means the Comcast is paying for that basically, is what that means.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry? Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to sign requisition two zero two one zero zero three in the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and eight cents to purchase two new uninterruptible power supplies, AKA UPS, for the server in the town hall. Funds to come from the Cable Revolving Fund.
Second.
Thank you Comcast. Charlie's the second. Um, okay. Roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
That's all of them.
That's it. Nice.
Yep.
All right. So moving along to, uh, just looking at my, okay, so we have approval of minutes. And, uh, I believe we need a, um, sealing of minutes from our, which, which.
Yeah. So I move to seal the selectmen's non-public meeting minutes dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Don't do that. You can't do that. Don't listen to me. Charlie? Is it aye? Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous.
I move to accept selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Do the roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve selectmen's go-for-grant public hearing minutes dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay. Um, okay, roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
I move to approve selectmen's budget and warrant articles, public hearing minutes dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Uh, let's go roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
Larry? Uh, Kate?
Aye.
And Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
And I'm done with minutes.
Okay, so the minutes are done. I'd like to make a suggestion to the board. We do have one item in non-public we didn't get to. Um, at the beginning of this meeting, I think it deserves a certain amount of time. And I'd like to, if the board's available, maybe next Tuesday night, we could discuss it in a kind of standalone meeting. Uh, Larry?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I have one more topic before we leave tonight, too.
Sure, I'll get back to you. So, so is everybody okay if we?
One second. On Tuesday night, you can't use this, you wouldn't be able to use the town Zoom meeting because that's the planning board, they use it.
Yeah, okay, we'd, we'd, uh, we could use mine or something.
Okay.
Um, or do it earlier, but, because.
Yeah, they do it at seven. Yeah, because they, they start this at seven.
Yeah. So if all we're doing is non-public and we do it at six, then we'll be good.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, everybody cool with that?
Sure.
That's fine. Or even five thirty.
Five thirty is probably better. All right, we'll get back to everybody with the schedule via email. Um, all right, Larry, you had something before we hang up?
Yeah, so in the past two or three weeks, I received a couple of phone calls in concern with the transfer station. Um, I have an empty, um, containers. I called Pete, this weekend's event was because Mellow didn't pick up on Friday. Some of the other concerns, a couple of people were saying is the hauler that hauls has been coming in a couple of times a day. Um, and they would like to know if it's possible that we can request a list of where he picks up, number one. Number two, that he lives out of town, but he still has a Newton sticker. So is that legal for him to be bringing that stuff here? Now, I just want to get the rest of the board's opinion, if they had any issues or phone calls from residents saying the transfer station, um, all the hoppers are full. And one day they had it just, they turned away, there was six of them turned away. And then I guess Sunday they were throwing all their trash on the ground. Not throwing it, but told to put it on the ground.
Matt, I've got the same calls, too.
All right. So I heard two different issues in there. So if we could kind of, uh, take a look at the first one. So, so I think the first thing I heard was that, that, uh, Mellow isn't picking up.
Right, they don't pick up on Fridays.
On Fridays? So.
So what is, so what is going in on Thursday, right? They got to deal with it over the weekend.
Yeah, right, right.
And they get filled real quick.
But I think Pete said he was supposed to be there Friday and he didn't show up.
Yeah.
So has Peter contact, Pete contacted Melo, Melo to see why they're not there?
I didn't go into discussion with him. I went into discussion why the hopper's so full and people are throwing their trash on the ground. And that's what his reasoning was because Mellow didn't pick up on Friday. And I said, well, maybe it's time to look for another company if this is happening too often.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely.
So do we want to ask Pete to get back to us with a proposal?
And that's a start.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can solve it tonight. So if we, if we were to have Nancy reach out to Pete and get us an answer on, um, you know, what he's gotten from Mellow and if, if Mellow keeps, you know, doing the same thing, what are other options are?
I can do that, Matt. I did talk to Pete today and I know one of the hoppers is down. So that's one of the reasons they have in the issue, but they did empty all the containers. So, and he, he doesn't know why they didn't come to fix the hopper, I think, on Friday. So he was reaching out to him about that. But I'll talk to Pete tomorrow and get more.
Yeah, and if he, if he doesn't have to wait for a meeting, if he sends us something via email, just so we're all in the loop.
Okay.
Okay, and I would like to address some of the other concerns that were raised. Number one, we do have a commercial hauler policy that the board approved before this was started, um, after the voters said they wanted it. So, um, the voter said yes to allowing this to happen. The board created a policy to govern this procedure. Number one. Number two, there is nothing in that policy that says the hauler himself must be a resident. All it says is that it must be Newton household trash.
A lot of question was, why he's not a resident, why does he have a Newton sticker on his truck?
Probably because he never removed it. But he doesn't need that sticker. Uh, my point I'm making is he doesn't need that sticker to get into the transfer station. He has a permit from the town of Newton to haul trash to the transfer station.
Lisa's correct on that. But what we should be doing is we should be looking at our residents first that are coming down there dumping the trash themselves and eliminate Saturdays. Go back to Tuesdays and Thursdays, no Saturdays.
Okay, and again, we, this allowing Saturdays was based on recommendations from the transfer station manager.
Well, there seems to be a problem.
Then I think we need to table this discussion until we can have the transfer station manager here to discuss it from his point of view.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. We had Pete in here. What was it, two weeks ago when we renewed the permit?
Yeah, and he said Saturdays were good.
Yeah, so, so if Pete wants to come down or if there's, if Pete needs to pulse the other people that are working there, you can obviously do that to see if they have a different perspective. But I, on both of these issues, I think what I'm saying is we need to hear from Pete because he's the manager.
Right. And then the third item that was requested was regarding a list of the residents that are, um, utilizing these services. As part of the policy, a list of the customers are to be kept at town hall. Um, also part of the policy is the transfer station is to maintain a list of the current permit holders, monitor and track the number of trips to the transfer station per permit holder and monitor the loads for properly marked bags and separated recyclables. So there are some things the transfer station is supposed to be doing.
Well, when was that last updated?
It was updated.
He provided us the permit.
Yeah, so the policy was updated um, when it was adopted February nineteen, twenty nineteen. So we're talking two years ago.
Charlie, are you referring to the list of residents that utilize the service?
Yeah, that's all.
Yes, that list is kept and it was just updated the day he, when he, um, gave us his permit money.
Two weeks ago, right? Or whatever.
So I'm thinking the issue came up because the hopper was broken.
Well, there's no problem if he's giving us a list.
Right.
Exactly. And that list, you know, shows that it is all Newton people. And these people, if they weren't utilizing this service, would have to be bringing their trash in themselves.
The board's made a decision and I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so, so yeah, we'll wait to hear from Pete on the first one. And then as far as Nancy, when you talked to Pete on the first one, if you want to mention if there's any concerns about the Saturday with, uh, Newton, I believe the company is called Newton Trash Hauling or something like that.
Okay.
And if he could just communicate back to us somehow, so.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, no, wait, come back. Um.
Yeah.
Too late, too late, too late.
No, it's not.
We've already left. We've already left. Go ahead.
You need to seal your minutes for tonight.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, since we're not going back into non-public.
Right.
So. We are, so we did close the non-public, so we're just sealing.
Yes, we closed that session, but we were planning on going back in, so we didn't move to seal. So.
Said the recess.
Yes.
Yeah, but the.
In fact, anyways, I will, just to make sure we're clean, I will move to come out of non-public or to close non-public at nine eleven PM. I now move to steal the non-public minutes until such a time that the board deems it is no longer wise and prudent to do so.
Anybody want a second?
So there's that two motions?
Yep.
Yeah, so let's back up. Let's do the first one.
Oh, yeah. So I had to move to come out of non-public. Did we get a second on that?
So Kate's the second. Uh, we're going to, I think we lost Larry. So Larry was my ride home, so I need to leave too. Um, so let's, let's go around. Uh, Charlie, your vote?
Yeah.
And, uh, Kate?
Yeah.
And Lisa?
Yep.
And Matt. So that's four in favor of closing the non-public. So now we'd like to seal the minutes.
All right. And now I move to seal the non-public minutes until such a time the board deems it is no longer wiser prudent to do so.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Uh, all right, roll call, Charlie?
Yep.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that's four, for sealing. And now hanging out there is a motion to adjourn.
And I move to adjourn at nine twelve PM.
Anybody want a second?
Seconds, seconds.
That's non-debatable. So.
Good night, all.
Everybody have a good night. Thank you, and we'll be talking soon.
Hey, bye.